Call this meeting the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. A roll call, please, Mr. Jameson. Hall?
Yes.
Little? Schwartz?
Here.
Trelka?
Here.
Layland?
Here.
Please join us in a moment of silence as we reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first I'll take a motion on the agenda as proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll take public comments. Is there anybody in the room that wishes to make public comments on something that's not on the agenda? Yes.
Good morning. My name's Justin Jensen. I'm the Regional Director for Senator Joanie Earns. Just wanted to thank you all for your service. And if there's anything our office can ever do to assist, feel free to reach out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Is there anybody online? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors will approve expenditures. The county auditor will be authorized to direct and issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Hi, Ms. Bieder.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payments today will be five hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents. And the share of sixty forty funds, there are bills for Mid-American of two hundred two dollars and twelve cents. And I don't believe there were any really significant payments today, so that's all I have unless anyone has questions.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Jameson. Hall?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes. All right, next we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. Brief update, our contractor is pouring the approaches on our Point Road Bridge project. So please bear with us just a few more weeks. We are getting some concerns from the citizens of Gilbertville. So hopefully by the end of August, the road should be reopened, if not sooner. We have finished up our paving for the year, and that was on Main Street and Auburn Road down in the Laporte City area, as well as Ridgeway. That was completed last week, and that does complete our paving for the year. And then we also finished up our seal coating work for the season. Washburn was seal coated this year, the community of Washburn. And then we are also working on a vacation, that'll be a vacation of Rickard Road that I'll be bringing to you in the next week or so. And there'll be more information to come and some emails. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Any other department heads wish to give an update this morning?
Good morning, Board. Yolando Lovelace, Director of Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. Just here to give you a quick synopsis of our end of the year. First, I need to apologize that it's so late, but the last couple of Tuesdays, we've had funerals that we were helping participate in. In fact, I got one today for a Vietnam-era veteran who served two tours in Vietnam and a tour thirty years total, but a tour also in Persian Gulf. Just to, just to ear, ear in, again, going back to the transparency piece, just showing you exactly the production throughout the year. One of the biggest things that we have going into 2024 is the outpatient clinic that's supposed to be moving on to university here. They're gonna, their date got pushed back. But what it's also brought was another veteran service officer that now we actually have four veteran service officers in Blackhawk County, because there's one permanently stationed at the outpatient clinic. The state brought that on, so it's not a county person, but it's a state person that's actually helping with benefits now at the outpatient clinic. So that's gonna help us in a standpoint of more people can come in and be seen, but also it's gonna help the residual counties throughout that outpatient clinic supports. But real quick, just our picture of our new board with the new commissioner. The other thing is ragby is going on right now, but I want to tell you about ragby for these two young ladies who rode from Washington DC all the way to Washington State, and they just completed it two days ago. Out of the six, the other four are still moving forward with that. But that's what an amazing accomplishment to ride almost, you know, thirty-six thousand miles, thirty, somewhere around there, thirty-three thousand six hundred and something miles, there you go, across the country in that standpoint. Just real quick, our summary for the year, and this is where we are, which makes us be successful, is the kind donations that we get throughout the community. You could see what our June was, but I also wanted to show you the summary of twenty-three. So when you look at our revenue, we took in about twenty-five K in just revenue from donations, cash donations from our Police Department, our Sheriff Department, other various departments within the county, and our kind citizens, just looking at veterans. So again, what a proud moment to be in this position when you see those kind of numbers in that standpoint for revenue. Just based off of what we have in expenditures, in the areas that we basically have our line items for our donations and where they actually end up at in that standpoint. Looking at year-end production, year-to-year, and all the way back to 2018, all the way up until the close of this year, the two big numbers that I just wanted to point out was the nineteen eighty-six was the amount of veterans that came in our door, to include their spouses. But the other one is the new veterans, three hundred and sixty-four, three hundred forty-six new veterans that came into our door. We're back up to post-COVID numbers, but I'm gonna show you another report where our veteran population is dwindling down in that standpoint. Here is a unique one. This comes from the federal government, and it shows what Blackhawk County has done throughout the year and what they pay out at the end of the year. This report is a year behind because it takes that much time for them to collect it. But if you can look at twenty, FY twenty, we had seventy-nine hundred veterans, and then the total compensation and pension was about thirty million, with the total expenditures, when you include Medicare, education, things of that nature, at fifty-eight-four. But then if you get down to twenty-twenty-two, you'll notice that we've lost about five hundred and something veterans. Now we're down to forty-seven oh-seven, and that's just fiscal year twenty-two. We haven't, they haven't accumulated fiscal year twenty-three. But you could see that the expenditures for compensation and pension has went up and also the total expenditures. That's exactly what every veteran that is getting some type of compensation, the total of it. And we have about nineteen hundred veterans or so that are getting compensation to include their spouses. And that's one reason why we are adamant about veterans coming in, because what are you also leaving your spouse if you, something tragically happened to you? If you die from a service-connected disability, now your spouse is entitled to a compensation for the rest of her life. It's basically a widow's pension. And so that's one of our focuses as we go into twenty-twenty-four. Again, you can look at what we're doing for monthly totals. In the month of May, this report comes from Des Moines, our veteran population, how many veterans are receiving, to include their spouses and widows, receiving benefits, and then the monthly total contribution in that standpoint. Then this one's kinda convoluted, but I kinda wanted to show you. This is the state of Iowa in the month of May. The one line item that I want you to look at is the total. There, for the month of May, there was seventy-three million for all ninety-nine counties that the federal government was paying veterans for compensation. But if you look at to years end, it's five hundred and fifty-nine. That's a great number. So when, when veterans are saying, hey, the VA is not taking care of me, that is not a true picture. Veterans are being taken care of. They have to actually come in and be seen so that they can get the support that they need. And totally, really, not every veteran is entitled to compensation because you do have to have an injury that was sustained within the service. But in that standpoint, the VA, when you look at it as a taxpayer, the VA is providing compensation. Now, can you get your health back? No. But there is a piece of compensation for the, basically, the... Excuse me. If I look at Yolando in that standpoint, thirty years of, of running up and down ships and things of that nature, you just really can't get that back. It's just wear and tear on your body, but it is compensation from it, right? In that standpoint. So I think that's a positive note, and this is just the state of Iowa in that standpoint. And then the last thing I kinda want to talk about is, we, the commission, we talked about it. I think we're heading in the right direction with our budget. Even though you see down there, we gave basically a surplus of forty-seven K because we don't know year-to-year, but one thing that we are doing is we are scrutinizing when people come in for assistance. And one of the things that our staff is doing, and I take hats off to my staff, is that we are making sure that if there's a veteran that needs assistance, then what else can we provide? Are they eligible for health insurance? Are they eligible for compensation? So that they become winners, right? Instead of being someone who's depending on things. We really want to get away from that entitlement environment and, and, and make a clear picture that, hey, you're part of the team. What else can we do to help you so we can get you out of that situation you're in? Otherwise, we're gonna fall into that entitlement thing where, hey, I, every month I need to come in and see the VA, and we don't want that. We want them to stand on their own two feet, so say. Then lastly, what we do for the ten thousand dollars that the state gives us every year for advertisement, for buying uniforms, the outreach, in a totality, that's what we've done throughout the year, to spend that money. Every year, we're supposed to spend that ten K, and we do that through radio advertisements, through newspapers, and other various articles in that standpoint. Other than that, I just kinda wanted to give you a totality of where we're at with the pictures, with the expenditures, with the revenue. Some of this other stuff is just for the commission, but I just kinda want to talk to the board about where we're at. When you look at it, we go back to this area here, right? So total expenditures, what the, the federal government is paying our, our veterans. And then you look at the budget that you guys have placed on us. We're almost giving back half that budget in that standpoint. So just wanted to talk about the success that we're having in our office and standing by to address any questions or concerns.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Yolando. All right, any other department heads wish to give an update today?
Good morning, Board. Caitlin Emmerich, interim director for Public Health. I have two updates for you. The first is on the Pinecrest sign, if you have that driven by the Pinecrest building. This is the photo of the sign that's up right now. There's a carousel of images that's circulating right now. This is the image with the directory. This one stays up for a little bit longer compared to the other ones, just so make sure that it is visible to people that are trying to navigate to the building. And... Also, our communications strategist, Gabby DeWitt, she developed a SOP for how to get content onto the sign. She shared that SOP with the Pinecrest tenants. And after today, I will share it with the board and other department heads if anyone wishes to submit content to be included on the sign. This is just a little bit of information that is included in that SOP. If we need to make tweaks, we can make tweaks to it, but this is kind of how it's structured right now. That emergency messaging and wayfinding messaging will be prioritized, and then other messaging must be either related to or supported by Pinecrest tenants or Blackhawk County broader. And then we're gonna have probably a maximum of four to six slides going so that, that directory is visible to people and it doesn't get lost. This sign also supports video files of up to fifteen seconds, so it's a full-color digital display. So if we want to put a video file up there, we can. And kind of as was proposed in the RFP, the sign will operate seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. It dims at nighttime to not be so, I guess, disruptive to, to the surroundings. And if you, if anyone wants to have content on the sign, we just ask that you send it to Gabby at least five business days before the goal of getting it onto the sign, just to give her enough time to make sure it's properly put together and gets on there in time. Right now, Gabby is the one that's putting the content on there. We are looking to train someone as backup. So, any questions about the sign?
Looks great.
Does look good.
Okay. The other update that I want to give is an update on syphilis in Blackhawk County. The reason I'm giving this update is because we've just made some recommendations as a department and to the Board of Health last month. And I want to share the same with you as the Board of Supervisors and also just to try to bring some community awareness to this issue. So this presentation was not developed by me. This was developed and given by Rebecca Smith, one of our disease prevention specialists at our June twenty-eighth Board of Health meeting. And I've just used some of her slides, so I want to give her due credit. Just a quick overview, if you're not familiar with syphilis. Syphilis is a sexually transmitted infection that's caused by a bacteria. Transmission occurs through sex as a sexual transmitted infection. It is a particular concern for pregnant women because it can cause congenital syphilis if pregnant women pass that along to their fetus or to their newborn at birth. And it's easily treated and cured. We have seen increasing syphilis cases for quite some time, to be honest. From the period of time from twenty-seventeen through twenty-twenty-one, syphilis cases in Blackhawk County have increased by four hundred and twenty-one percent. They're also increasing across the state and across the nation. So in that same time period, cases in the state of Iowa increased one hundred and sixty percent, and increases in the United States increased by seventy-one percent. You can see this line graph here, kind of the different increasing rates. The, the United States is that gray line, which is the top line. Blackhawk County is that middle one, and then the state of Iowa rate is the tan line, where in twenty-twenty-one, it's the lowest of the three. So kind of stuff that we've been doing to bring awareness to this for providers. Back in December of twenty-twenty-one, we did a healthcare provider alert to bring attention to our increasing cases in syphilis, in congenital syphilis cases in Iowa and in Blackhawk County. In January, in January of twenty-twenty-three, the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services issued an alert encouraging health professionals throughout the state to be vigilant for syphilis among their patient populations and do additional serology testing to follow CDC screening guidelines. Because statewide, in twenty-twenty-two, provisional data indicated there were six hundred and fifteen cases of infectious syphilis and continued increases in syphilis diagnosis across the state of Iowa. In this graph right here, congenital syphilis cases are not figured into this, but I'm gonna talk about that in just, in just a second. Congenital syphilis cases have their own category, and they have their own kind of different case definition that we use from a, from a public health standpoint. So for congenital syphilis, congenital syphilis occurs when a pregnant woman acquires syphilis, remains untreated, and passes that infection on to the fetus at birth. For the, for the newborn, serious complications can result, including death. So from a public health standpoint, this is an entirely preventable condition, and we want to make sure this is a preventable condition. The two graphs at the bottom kind of show averted syphilis versus cases, congenital cases that have occurred. So that navy blue color in the bar graph are cases that have been averted. So that means the woman has been screened, diagnosed, and treated prior to the birth of the infant, and so there has not been a congenital syphilis case out of that. The gold line, or the gold bar, excuse me, is where we are seeing congenital syphilis cases, where those cases are occurring. It's not been treated prior to the birth of the baby. So the reason I kind of talk about this is because, like I said, congenital syphilis can be entirely averted if pregnant persons are diagnosed and treated early. So, we're working with the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services to update our screening recommendations and push those recommendations out to providers. We're particularly focusing on pregnant women at this time. We are seeing a little bit of shift in the demographic for syphilis cases overall with a greater proportion of women acquiring syphilis, thus the result in, in congenital syphilis cases. So, so these are CDC screening guidelines that all pregnant women are to be screened at their first visit, and then they're retested at twenty-eight weeks of gestation to ensure that, a little bit closer to birth, that they can be treated appropriately if they need to. So in, back in June, so on June fifth, we issued a letter to our local healthcare providers recommending additional testing for pregnant women on an opt-out basis at that twenty-eight weeks gestation. This is just a little snapshot of that letter. It was a, it was kind of a long letter. It was six, six or so pages long, but it really outlines everything that we're asking providers to do. We have had success doing provider education sessions with our local OB-GYN offices. So we're trying to just kind of get the word out, not only to providers, but to the general population to know that this is something that we're asking to happen in all pregnancies, the screening. So kind of just in summary, nationally, we're seeing our cases of syphilis increasing. In Blackhawk County, our syphilis rates have been increasing and above the state's syphilis rate for the last three years. It's treatable, preventable condition, and we are moving forward with the recommendations to do that initial and the twenty-eight weeks gestation screening for all pregnant women. So, any questions for me about that? I know it's not something I typically present to the board, and I don't have an ask outside of the fact, if you know any providers, or if you know any women that are pregnant or potentially pregnant, to just spread the word.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other department heads? Yes.
Anna Fezremeyer, HR Director. Just really quick, wanted to bring to your attention that I'll be coming forward with a couple of proposals for some software changes. So back during the budget sessions I talked about, we needed a new applicant tracking system because civic HR is sunsetting in about a year, a little under a year. So we've been collecting proposals to look at switching over to another option. So that will be coming before you all. And then the benefit enrollment platform, now that we have fully implemented to Wellmark with our health insurance coverage and worked that out with Navitas and everything, I want to kind of revisit that online enrollment platform, mobile access for employees, as well as on the backend of things for us to have a little bit more efficient process. So that did come to us from our consultant. They actually did the whole kind of bidding, I guess. So I won't necessarily, it was through a client request, similar to like us who worked, who is self-insured, and they were looking for a better option for their members. And so I haven't actually solicited additional bids for this software, for the benefit enrollment, but that was all done by the consultant on behalf of another client. So I hope that suffices, the policy, but I'll provide more information, and we can discuss that in a couple of weeks, probably August eighth. We did have our plans to meet August first, next Tuesday, for a policy review. I need to check in with Supervisor Schwartz, Little, Grant, Bieder, Mike Trinan, and myself to see if that still works, or if we need to push that out a week or, or two. So I'll be sending out an email here soon, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other department heads in the room or online? Just go ahead, Al.
Al, UIT Director. I just wanted to do a quick announcement. Later this afternoon, we will be unveiling the new facelift of the new Blackhawk County website. It has been a very long process, but I'm excited to finally show everyone what it will look like. And I will send an all-staff email when that's ready to go. So, any questions?
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other department heads or elected officials? Just to give an update. Okay, we'll move on to the minutes approved from the July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following will be actuated upon by a single resolution, unless there's something that someone wishes to discuss or pull out.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson. Trelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes. Next, we'll move on to contracts and agreements. Item A, this is a resolution to appoint UMB Bank NA of Kansas City, Missouri, to serving as paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent. Approve the paying agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement, and authorize the chair to sign for the same as recommended by Michelle Wiener, Finance Director.
So moved.
Done.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Jameson. Layland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes. Item B, this is a resolution to authorize and provide the issuance of four million six hundred thousand general obligation bonds, series twenty-twenty-three, and levying a tax to pay said bonds, and to approve the tax exemption certificate and continuing disclosure certificate as recommended by Michelle Wiener, Finance Director.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Jameson. Hall?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes. Item C, this is a resolution, the twenty-eight E agreement between Blackhawk County and the Blackhawk County Solid Wage Management Commission for the use of proceeds from the twenty-twenty-three issuance of general obligation bonds for essential county purposes of Blackhawk County contingent upon the approval of the county board to proceed with the sale and to be approved by the chair to sign for the same.
So moved.
Done.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Jameson. Trelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes. Item D, this is a resolution with the lowest responsible bid received from Permar Services, five-ten First Street, Southwest, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, for Facilities Security Services, with a bid for the courthouse at a cost of four hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty, or seven hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, and Pinecrest Building at a cost of one hundred forty-two thousand five hundred forty-two dollars and forty cents for a three-year term to be awarded and direct the chair to sign for the same as recommended by Rory Giving, Facilities Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Rory?
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Facilities Director. Did want to let the board know that we did receive six proposals that were opened up last week. After review, Permar was the lowest, or the lowest cost, as well as they are our existing security provider to date. So just did a quick review of where we are currently at compared with the new cost. It's roughly a twenty-three percent increase for the total three-year contract on both the courthouse and the Pinecrest facility. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just asking for questions. Go ahead, it's crazy, Layland.
Okay, thank you. Rory, I did have a question. I know at different times, we've talked about the security at the Pinecrest facility, and depending on what we do with that building, I know going forward, I said there could be some changes or maybe not, but is that something that is going into a three-year term? Like I say, if we wanted to look at a one-year or two-year, or is there something like that that the board could consider? Or should we just enter a three-year and, and it's subject to termination, I guess, as we go forward?
One thing we did change with this particular RFP versus the RFPs in the past for security services is we did change it to a thirty-day out, whereas in the past, it was a sixty-day out. So I think my recommendation would be to utilize that thirty-day out if we did decide that these services were no longer needed at the Pinecrest facility.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I was just wondering what, what the board would be able to do if they did have a change of thought or opinion, or wanted to even do something differently out there. So, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, there is a resolution on the floor. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson. Layland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes. Moving on to other business, this is item A. Resolution, the tax sales certificate assignment for two vacant lots, parcels eight-nine-one-three-dash-two-four-dash-one-seven- certificate assignment for two vacant lots, parcels 8913-24-177-020, certificate number 2015001051, and 818913-24-177-001, certificate number 2007001220 pursuant to Section 46.31 of the Code of Iowa be approved, and said certificates of purchase of tax sale be assigned to Alan Jackson, owner of Flipping J LLC, as recommended by Linda Hinsman, County Treasurer.
Would you repeat that one more time?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Hall?
Yes.
Trolka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. This is item B, a resolution with compromise offering the amount of $500 each by Alan Jackson, owner of Flipping J LLC, on taxes owned for the vacant lots be approved as recommended by Linda Hinsman.
So moved.
Second. So moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Trolka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Item C, this is a resolution to approve the release of the Blackhawk County Jail healthcare and both mental, medical and mental services RFP as recommended by Nate Neff, jail administrator.
So moved.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded. All right. Is there any questions or discussion? Anybody that wishes to speak to us today?
Does Nate happen to be in the room? Or I was going to say, I know Michelle could probably answer questions too. I was, I know.
Yes, Nate's here.
Okay. And I know Mike was going to do some review of it at the end of last week or whatever, and I was just wondering if that was completed and any thoughts on that or changes?
My review is completed.
Okay. And, and a question for Nate, I guess, is, and I, something I hadn't considered when I saw in the RFP, and it makes perfect sense, but there was mention of joint proposals. And I thought, is that, is that something that's done often? Or is that something we should expect, Nate?
It's not anything I'm familiar with. Obviously, each of these companies is kind of in it for their own profit. So I would not anticipate any joint proposals. The one thing might be if someone brought in somebody else for the mental health portion of it versus the medical portion of it. But I would not anticipate any joint proposals from it, no.
And just from my own memory, I think it was, we said the date was September 12th. Is that correct? I was thinking that we expect the proposals to be returned?
Yes, I believe that's actually another agenda item to send for a public opening on that day.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to, yeah, I was thinking about it. I'd forgotten that. So thank you. And thanks very much for the list, Nate. I really appreciate it. Whether those are, we'll hear from that many. It was certainly some effort put into the list of getting some of the word out at least. So thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, there's, I believe, nine companies I found. Only two of them are currently in Iowa, so I don't know if the others have any interest in branching out this way, but we'll definitely reach out to them and see if we get any takers.
Thank you.
Do we have any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson. Layland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Trolka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. We move on to item D. This is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise a public hearing to be held at 9:05 AM Tuesday, September 12, 2023, in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on proposed healthcare services for Blackhawk County Jail RFP.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? This is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, the motion carries. Moving on to item E, this is a resolution to approve the boardroom audio slash visual equipment project for an estimated cost of $75,000 we've paid for with American Rescue Plan funds.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Beeter, or Mr. Jameson. Hall?
Yes.
Trolka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. All right. Moving on to item nine, any reports or information from the board?
All right. Hearing none. This is item 10. We will be moving into a closed session. First, we'll do, this is a resolution pursuant to the provisions of the Iowa Open Meetings Law. The Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors shall proceed into closed session with attorney to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price to the government body would receive for the property or reduce the price the government body would receive for that property. The, the minutes and the audio of the recording of the closed session under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when all transactions discussed are complete pursuant to Iowa Code, Section 21.5J.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson. Trolka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. All right. I'll ask folks to exit the room as we switch over the table. Yes.
All right. This is a motion to adjourn the Board of Supervisors meeting in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Moving on to item 11, possible board action to approve the purchase of real estate property.
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. The board will be moving forward. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed? All right. The motion carries. Next is item 12. This is an entertaining motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, all.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.